Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
I can, Joe.
Good evening, this is Joseph Botash and I'd like to call to order the February 27th.
Yes.
Could we mute them so I could get through this? Call to order the February 27, 2024 Rentham Joint Meeting with the Planning Board Subcommittee and the Economic Development Commission and the Rentham Select Board. In accordance of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, the public meeting of the Select Board shall be conducted via remote. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note, this meeting is being recorded as a preliminary matter. This is Select Board Chair Joseph Botash. Permit me to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda can agenda are present, it can be, it can hear me. At this time, we'll confirm access. Select Board Member Jim Anderson.
Anderson here.
Select Board Member Chris Gallo.
Gallo here.
Select Board Member Phil Harrington.
Harrington here.
Select Board Member Michelle Rouse.
Rouse here.
All right. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Administrator Kevin Sweet.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Greg Inos.
Affirmative.
And our Executive Assistant Amanda Vazapolo.
Present.
All right. At this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Beth Bryson, the Chair of the EDC, to call her meeting to order.
Good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is EDC Chair Beth Bryson. Permit me to confirm that the following members of the EDC are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Rebecca Zittamore.
Present.
Joanna McFarland.
Present.
Jeff Robison.
Present.
Thank you.
All right. So Chairman McKnight, I know you have a subcommittee, and who do you have with you today?
I see Mr. Woodhams is on our Vice Chair. I have not seen whether or not Jim Lawrence is here. If he is, could you please speak up, Jim? He's scheduled to be here. But it appears he might be a bit late.
Okay, not a problem. I want to thank everybody for coming together. I think this is going to be a good opportunity to talk, to get an understanding of where, what the position of the board is. I was just looking to see, is Rachel Benson on the call?
I am.
Oh, there you are. That's right, you got the Rentham logo there. All right. So first thing on our agenda is to vote and sign the letters we're writing to Governor Haley, Senator Roush, and Representative Vaughn regarding Master of Law, Chapter 48, Section 3A, the MBTA Communities. And instead of reading all the letters, I'm going to ask Michelle if she can just read a couple of excerpts from the letter, so people can get an idea of what we're trying to do. Because I think a lot of people, and Chris, please chime in, a lot of people think that we're saying no, it's not the case. Where, am I right, Chris?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. It's just, I think, an initial point of clarification. I just want everyone to know, as you do and the board does, that tonight is not a vote on whether we're agreeing with this zoning or not. Tonight's a vote on the letters that you just alluded to, whether we're going to send them to the representatives. I think there's some confusion that people thought that we were taking a vote tonight, whether we were going to adopt the zoning, or, you know, fight the zoning, or vote not to include this zoning. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. If the, Mr. Chair, if you want to add anything to that, that'd be great.
Yeah, and, you know, I think a poor choice of words was issued by the Sun Chronicle when it says Rentham's going to fight. We're not going to fight, we're going to collaborate with the state, is what we're going to do. So I think it's a little different. So Michelle, if you could just give us some highlights of the context of the letter to the governor, for example.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Honorable Governor Maura Geely, on behalf of the Town of Rentham, the Rentham Select Board is requesting your support and guidance with the MBTA Housing Bill requirements. The town is well aware of the housing shortage and is doing its part to meet the needs of our residents, their families, and all who would like to call Rentham home. Our residents are not objecting to increasing our housing supply. The town, with the help of the Massachusetts Area Planning Council and many other state organizations, has made it clear the need for more housing and affordable housing. The MBTA Housing Bill requires us to increase our population by as much as 13% without any state funding. This would cause the largest one-time increase in population in our town's history. For us to commit to the 15 units per acre requirement would overload our infrastructure, police, fire, and schools. Rentham, along with its elected officials, town leaders, and residents, are willing to work to create a smart growth while addressing the needs of our longtime residents and for generations to come. Rentham, unlike most communities, lacks municipal sewage and is challenged with inadequate supply of water. The community is working to resolve these issues and hopes to fulfill the immediate needs and the needs for smart growth. Rentham is currently in the process of addressing many of those needs. To address the inadequate amount of available housing, we are working with a development group who is proposing to add a mixed-use community to our town. Our zoning meets the needs of Rentham with a workable density supported by our infrastructure, which will likely put a strain on service, but not to the degree of the MBTA housing requirement. The development plan created by Rentham addresses the key points from our master plan, which we have worked diligently on over for the past four years, by listening to the residents, the town's department heads, and elected officials to smartly address the community's desires. Rentham has a plan and is doing its part, but the MBTA housing requirement ignores this effort and dictates changes that do not align with the goals of our residents and will lead to the destruction of the small-town New England charm we've come to love. We request your support as our governor to assist us in obtaining a waiver or modifications to the MBTA housing requirements. Rentham is doing its part to address housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think everyone could hear that we're not saying no. It just, we all know, we don't have town saw. We know we're working with environmental partners to try to get more water, because we don't have enough water. And, you know, the board feels that this is reasonable. I shouldn't speak for the board, I'll say, I think it's a reasonable request. I think the, you know, the word "fight" is a poor choice of words, so it's not a fight. It's, it's, you know, it's asking for a concession. Jim, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, again, you know, I think we're all, you know, in agreement, like, we're controlled growth, but I think that, you know, unfunded mandate that would hamper us as far as water infrastructure, road infrastructure, also you've got, you know, all those units, you know, additional buildings for schools, teachers, more firemen, more policemen. I talked to seniors when we were doing our tax levy, and a lot of seniors concerned about being priced out of the town of Rentham. And I think if, without help or funding from the state, the problems we're going to have is that our seniors aren't going to be able to live here anymore. And I also think that, you know, the young people who grew up in Rentham, as first-time home buyers, won't be able to afford to live in Rentham, because we're going to have to raise taxes if we don't get funding from the state. So that's my biggest concern.
Thank you. Select Board Member Gallo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the leather, I'm sorry, the letter did a great job of summarizing the main points. I would just like to touch on a couple of my own, as I have some concerns and questions. You know, as Select Man Anderson said, I do agree, I believe this, as it stands right now, is an unfunded mandate that lacks genuine interest in collaboration. But it's, you know, very full of threats about losing grants and potential lawsuits. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the right approach. I think, you know, we do, I know, we have a charter and a home rule petition that allows us to govern ourselves, giving us the power, giving the power to the people to control our own destiny, and that's what we're asking for here. We want to say, we want a seat at the table. This is potentially a huge change to what our town is going to look like, and to give us no say in it, I think is unfair and I think it's short-sighted. You know, I remember the last town meeting, when our residents came out in droves, you know, to say no to charter amendments, that we're going to take the power away from the voters. And so I just asked my colleagues, my constituents, my fellow resident voters, you know, we've got to be careful not to be so quickly to just go along with this about fully investigate, without fully investigating it, and, you know, having the, just being willing to give up our rights to have a say in these projects, right? I want to stress the, I want to also stress the fact that no one is saying that we don't want or need more in a diverse housing stock. We want to have a house for every budget here in Rentham. The zoning, however, is market rate, and contrary to what I've heard, has a zero component for affordability and zero component for age restriction. So we need to ask ourselves, is this really going to help bring lower-priced housing to Rentham for our seniors, for our lower-income earners, et cetera, et cetera? Also, she had a same concerns about our infrastructure. It's inadequate, can we support this many units with our current infrastructure without having massive upgrades that we can't afford without the state's help? So we got to look at that. I also, I sat on the, I sat on the master plan steering committee. Why did we have a master plan steering committee and a master plan that listened to all of our residents, when this is essentially taking that and shredding it? It's, it's, that's not, in my opinion, that's ridiculous and short-sighted and backhanded. So, and I do want to stress this, I've heard some silly things out there that aren't true. This board, in my opinion, and no one is saying that we should ignore or not follow the law. That's not what we're saying. We take this very seriously, and we dedicated huge amounts of time for this. What I think we're saying is, we need to ask the question, though, is, is this constitutional? Is it legal? Is it enforceable? Right? I personally want to know those, and I don't know the answers to those questions yet. So I propose personally that we take two approaches simultaneously. I think we use every tool in our tool belt to determine if we can either stop or amend the zoning. We need to investigate, looking at what the other communities are doing, who have decided to push back and pump the brakes, asking for more time to analyze the legality. Asking for more time to analyze the legality to see what our options are simultaneously. I think we need to do a deeper dive into identifying parcels that would have the most negative impact on Rentham. So we move forward with identifying these parcels. I think there are more out there than have been presented to us. Uh, and I also think we need to take a close look at all proposed and future projects. To see how we, again, can mitigate the density somehow with current developer groups or future development groups. Uh, and with that, I say, yo, thank you. I appreciate everyone's time and energy with this. Uh, please note, we take this very seriously. And again, we're looking to collaborate here. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And, and just a reminder that, you know, the, the five select board members are trying to help maneuver this, you know, the, uh, planning board. It's their job to, uh, create zoning and to create that. It's our job to take that and see how it's going to fit in. So we present it at town meeting and the people vote. So it's, it's not the five of us making the final decision. It's town meeting floor that's going to make the final decision. But we want to make sure when that town meeting. It, this article is presented at town meeting, that everybody has all the information that they need to make the right decision. Select Board Member Harrington. You're muted. Bill, you're muted.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Geez, that was such a good opening. Darn. But anyway, uh, look, everything, uh, has been said. Uh, the letters are, are clearly well thought out. They present. That we, all we want is a seat at the table. Uh, we, we, we're not looking to have something forced out our throat mandated. We want to do what's right, what's best for the town of Rentham, for the twelve thousand people that live here and, uh. But that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Select Board Member Roche.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if any of you have been following our Board of Selectment meetings in the last planning board meeting, you kind of know where I stand. I don't like it. I don't like any of this. Um, I don't like it at all, and for many reasons that have been stated, um, by my fellow board members. I think that I just want to reiterate that, um, you know, I agree with. Select Board Member, um. Gallo's three-tiered approach. But in, in thinking of this further, I just want to reemphasize with everyone that this is our decision. And when I say our decision, I don't mean. Select Board, I don't mean Planning Board, I don't mean Town Manager. I mean us as residents of the town of Rentham. And it's our job as the Board of Selectment to ensure that you are well-informed and that you're knowledgeable. In addition, that we have looked at every avenue, that we have reviewed the law, the mandate. We're not being threatened. Or bullied into making a decision, that we are making an informed decision for us, for the residents, and for the best interest. For this town. So when this goes to vote, we can all look at each other and feel as though we have done everything possible within our means. And I mean everything to ensure we are providing the best plan that we can for this town and its residents. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Town Manager Sweet. So at this time, is it, uh, appropriate to make a motion to vote the letters?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, I think it is appropriate, uh, to make that motion for, um, for approval.
All right. So at this time, the chair entertained a motion to vote and sign the letters to Governor Haley, Senator Roche, and Representative Vaughn regarding Master in Law. Chapter forty A, section three A, the MBTA communities.
The move.
So a motion made by, uh, Selectman Anderson, is there, was there a second?
Yeah, uh, so, second?
Second by Select Board Member Gallo. I gotta remember, we're a select board now, so I'm sorry. We're going to do a roll call vote. Uh, we have, uh, Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Botash, yes. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Roche.
Roche, yes.
All right. So, uh, that passed five-zero, so the letters will be put into the record. They'll be available on our website. Once they're, they're signed and endorsed and, uh, you know, and we just, I just think it's a, a, a good step that we're taking. At, at this time, uh, I would like to turn it over to the EDC for comments and then we're going to go to the, the, uh. The subcommittee from planning, so that way they can hear from all sides. So Beth, I'm going to turn it over to you now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, you know, the Economic Development Commission, um, you know, is, was established by the town and, and our mission was to strengthen and promote. Our local economy and our businesses and. Encourage development, um, but that has, development has to be consistent with our town and the vision of our town. Um, you know, I think a lot of people that live in this town, uh, want to see it. Preserved with its historic charm, but still economically grow, um, and. Provide amenities and, you know, to our community and our residents. So I very much feel in line with Select Board Member Gallo. And Select Board Member Roche and their sentiments. I feel a mandate of this magnitude is. You know, i- it's big enough for us to, to take a step back and, and analyze it and it, and it should be properly vetted. So I think, you know. Very much in line with, with the sentiments, um, thus far.
Okay, would you like to give your, your, your committee members an opportunity to speak? They have anything to add?
Joanna and Rebecca are, are here. Would, would either of you want to participate? Have anything to add? Rebecca?
Uh, yes, Rebecca Zidimer. Um, I, I, I'm in agreement with the letters. I think that they're very, um. Very thoughtful and well-stated. I don't think that we are pushing back to say no to anything as, as Joe said. I think that, that we're just asking, uh, for some time to make sure that, that the decisions that are made are proper for the town. I, I do believe that, uh, on the economic development side too, I think it's very important that. You know, these, these communities are placed in an area that can benefit both the town, the state, and also, um, you know. Get to commutable, um, areas because honestly, right now, Rentham may be an adjacent community, but you cannot really access MBTA. Um, services at all within our town. And I think that that's an important thing to be brought up as a member of the disabled community myself. Um, I can tell you that it's not easy for me to get to a train station from, from Rentham. So, you know, when we're called an adjacent community, a lot of these communities are right along the rail trail, but. We're, we don't have any real services, um, available to us, um, within Rentham. So I think that's a, that's a major consideration for the state to look at as well. Um, otherwise, I agree with, uh, I agree with the letters and I think it's a great job by your selectmen. Thank you.
Great. Do you have any other members who would like to speak, Beth? All right.
Sorry, I don't believe at this time now. I think, um.
So, uh, Michael McKnight, Chuck Woodhams, and I saw Jim Lawrence on here. Uh, you, you've heard some conversation and I think this is a good conversation to hear. Uh. It, it's something that, you know, we need to create an action plan on how to pursue this and how to go further. You know, the. What is the intent of this zoning article? Is it for our June town meeting?
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you. And we have Rachel on too, who can answer that because that is the intent. The public meeting is still open. I'd, I'd like to ask a point of order, though. We had planned on having three planning board members here. There may be another resident, uh, in the town who is part of the planning board who is not here as part of the planning board. Um, and I'd like to ask, uh, for a point of order as to whether that person should stay or can stay as we are not, uh. We did not vote this to be a public meeting, just a work session.
All right. So I would suggest that that party depart the meeting and they can reach out to Amanda in the morning and she can send. A, a copy of the meeting to them to view.
Thank you. Um. Rachel, do you have, uh, the ability to take care of that or, uh?
Yes, done and done.
Thank you very much. And we wanted to violate open meeting law. Um, so just, and I'll let Chuck, uh, Mr. Woodhams and Mr. Lawrence speak. I was not at the last planning board meeting. It is in the public hearing process. Uh, we still have another meeting to go and it's planned to vote, uh. If we can get through that process for. The June town meeting. Uh, what I would say is as a planning board member, and I've been a resident of the town for twenty-seven years and on the planning board for thirteen, and I haven't seen in. I have not seen an article like this where virtually we didn't have an opportunity to review either a zoning bylaw. Or the intent of that bylaw as it relates to a project. Um, so I am, I am in agreement, uh, that we need to work with the state and try to figure out how to make this work because. The information before the planning board is essentially, there are roughly two lots that, that. Fit this profile of fifty acres and, and in town. And neither of them, in my opinion, are great spots. If we had to put fifteen units per acre. We have town center zoning that we revamped several years ago. Um, that starts at five and I believe the planning, the, uh, the project before us maxes, maximizes at eight units per acre. Which is still an awful lot when you think about eight units per acre and then the number of cars and. Signals and lights and potential impact on schools and public, uh. Public, um, you know, the town DPW and different things like that. So. It's unfortunate that we have what is, what essentially, in my opinion, mandate, uh, to have to do this without much say. Uh, the planning board prides itself in looking out for the best interest of the town, taking the zoning bylaws and amending them when, when possible. As well as looking at each project that comes before us and making sure that it is in the best interest of the town. And is a balanced approach to development and growth. Um, so. Uh, I appreciate the, uh, board of, the, the select board putting those letters forward and look forward to helping to mold this if we can into something that will work for Rentham. Um, I'll offer up, uh, Mr. Lawrence or Mr. Woodhams with any further comments on the planning board.
Chuck, you want to go or you want me to go? What do you want to?
Uh, if you want to go, Jim, go right ahead.
I, I don't have a whole lot to add. Um, I think, you know, I, I think that our. We feel our mandate is to, you know. Protect the town and, and, uh, and do its best for the town. And I think a big part of our conversation has been centered around the consequences if we don't. Uh, comply. So we've been looking for how to comply. Um, if we could somehow change the rules of compliance, I think all of us would welcome that. Um. But, uh, but I think that's kind of, kind of where we've been coming from and, uh. I, I guess. I guess, in, inside of that, um. I won't speak for Rachel, but my feeling based on the presentations we've seen is they've been trying to find the best possible solutions inside of compliance. So that's kind of the, the, you know, recommendations or ideas that are on the table. Um, if we're going to change the rules for compliance, great, we can go back to work. Do something different. That's kind of how I felt about it. That's, I think, was the gist of what came out of the last meeting and if Mr. Woodhams has any other insights. Turn it over to you, Chuck.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you Chairman Botash and, and all members of the Board of Selection and the, the EDC. For, uh, allowing us this time during your meeting. I, as, as everybody, I, I share your frustration with the state and forcing this on us. Uh, I've lived in this town my whole life. I grew up in a house that my mother grew up in. So my roots are real deep here and it really sits badly with me. Uh, to have the state come in and, and try to run over us. Um, and I would, uh, I would welcome any. Um, options that the town can, can perhaps. Work with the state on to, to try to come up with a, uh. Some kind of a compromise. I, I, I agree. I think the. The approach of we're going to fight this is, is. I think it's naive to think that the state is not going to play hardball with this. They're already doing it. Um, and. We need to, from my perspective as a planning board member. I need to. Think of this as. What is going to happen if we don't comply? We need to have a plan in place that we're a lot, that we're willing to accept. That, that puts us in compliance. Um, I know a lot of towns are fighting this and I, and I hope that they. Have success. And if, you know, Rockport has a, has a suit against the state and if it can be found that it's unconstitutional in the state, the court say. You can't do this. If we had, if we've adopted this zoning. And then it's turned, it turns out that the state is told they can't do it. We as a town would have the option at that point to go back and revote, to rescind that voting. Uh, you know, that zoning amendment, uh. Just as, as, as we would have to accept it at a town meeting, we could have another town meeting where we, we. We reverse it. But I think we need to prepare. For the reality that. This is going to have to happen. And we as, as town leaders have to come up with the best solution. With the accept, you know, with, with the understanding that we may not get any kind of, uh. Help from the state and that they're just going to say, no, you need to do this or we're going to make you do it. And. Um, I, I think we hope for the best, but we plan for the worst and, and as a planning board. I think we need to, to keep going with, with figuring out where to put this zoning and, and. Um, hope that we can somehow. Get. Uh, some kind of, uh. Compromise from the state on it. But I, I, I think we need to face the reality that it's, it's. Not likely that it's going to be overturned. I, I just don't, I don't have a, a good feeling about that. So. That's, that's pretty much all I have at this point. Thank you.
Well, Chuck, I have to say on February twenty-seventh, I, I may agree with you. But on August thirty-first, we may have a little different outlook when other cities and towns who are. Challenging this are getting some answers back. So, uh, my question to Rachel is, it's, you're putting it on the June meeting. Why is it? Have to be, uh, uh, adopted by the, by the end of June or is it by the end of the year?
Hi, Rachel Benson, um, Director of Planning and Economic Development. As an adjacent community, we have until, uh, December of. Twenty twenty-four, uh, to adopt this zoning. So if we don't do it at June, then we have to do it at November. Um, if we don't do it at November. Then you're going to have to do a special meeting or. See what the state does.
So would it make sense to push this to November so that we can see how other things pan out and we can do more research and maybe get some responses back and, and. You know, not push this through and give it time in, in, uh. You know, to look at all the avenues that are out there and just really do our due diligence and utilize the later date.
That is completely up to you. Sure. Um, if you just let me know what else you want to, um, you know, the researching that you need and, and things, we can put that together. Um, education.
Yeah. So, uh, the, I'm going to ask the board, Jim, what do you think about postponing it from, from June to November?
I think it's a great idea, Mr. Chair.
Right. Uh, Select Board Member Gallo?
A, a hundred percent agreed. I think, uh, we need time to reanalyze the parcels that were presented to us. I want a, I want a second opinion on any other possible parcels that are out there. Um, I know that I personally talked to a few property owners in town who told me they're aware of other parcels that could actually be potentially lesser impact, better fit. Um, so we one hundred percent need to look at every single option. I think the more time we have, the better. So I would support that, Mr. Chair.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I agree. Uh, I'd like to see. How some of the other towns fare and see if the governor is willing to work with us on some concessions and come up with a better plan for us. Uh, so yeah, I would definitely like to push it out. Into the November meeting. And I'd also like to see some more, uh, options. Uh, on the table versus the, the, the limited choices we've put together currently. That's absurd.
All right. And Select Board Member Roche.
Uh, agree as well. And if not November, I might just want to throw it out there that the possibility of a. You know, we look at maybe a special town meeting if necessary. If we feel like November, we need a little bit more time to that deadline at the end of December. So, um, but definitely we do not have the information. We have not done the due diligence to bring this to vote in June. So I'm in agreement.
All right, uh. All right, uh, Chairman McKnight, what do you think of that? You're muted.
And if my cursor crossed three screens, I was trying to find it, so thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, I I'm in agreement. Uh, I think the mechanism is to how we uh postpone this. Uh, we'll work on on our town and our planning board meeting on Wednesday. Uh, we have some other zoning articles, so Rachel, just make sure, let's make sure we dot the i's and cross the t's on on. Pushing this to November and closing the town here at town meeting. Uh, or planning board meeting on this subject.
Do you want to keep the public hearing open? You can keep the public hearing open and. Now we can. If you don't have to close it.
Whatever the mechani- mechanism is that gets us to delaying it till November, so we don't, we don't uh. Violate any uh, any rule. That's that's my intent.
All right. We have a moderator, Mr. Goddard, who would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and and thank you to all uh three board members who are here. Um, I thought the letter was great and. Um, I have had conversations with several members of the board independently. Uh, but just a couple of things, cuz I don't need to rehash everything said. I I think we do go on the dual track that Select McGallow referenced. Um, I think uh Selectman Rouse started to to reference it. I mean, we also have the option, right, of calling a special meeting if we want, a special town meeting if we wanted to. If we were ready to vote in September or October, you know, we don't have to, we don't have to necessarily go until November. So I think, Mike, it's important that we leave that option open, uh, because we wanna go early, because if for some reason it doesn't pass. Mr. Chairman, right? And if we did a special in September or October, we'd have another bite at the apple to come back in November. Uh, but I I I applaud um all of our elected officials. Uh, for what they've been doing on this. I thank you for your time and your effort, and I do think it's critical that we look at other parcels. To see, um, you know, what we made. And I did, I did look at the, I I did watch the presentation to the Board of Selectmen. I think it would be useful. To spend more time on this and educate ourselves and the and the residents. So I, with that, I I thank everyone again.
All right. So, uh. If you, my question is, if you were to close the public hearing, could a new one be established? And the reason why is, as long as the public hearing is open, we cannot do a joint meeting with the whole planning board. It would only be the subcommittee. So, you know, I I think there are members of your planning board that would like to participate. In like today's meeting, for example. So is it, is it something you could close the public hearing and then reopen one? I'm not sure, Kevin or Rachel, if you can answer that question.
Very good point, Mr. Chair.
So the the planning board, all they would have to do is continue their public hearing to a certain date. And then all the board members could attend that meeting.
Okay.
I think how this was originally structured, it was, you know, we thought it was going to be a a working um group. Type of a thing, so a smaller. Um, we didn't know it was going to be a quorum of each of the boards, so. But if that's what you wanna do and the board still wants to keep the public hearing open, all they need to do is just continue that. Public hearing to that date that you wanna continue it to.
Actually, I think it would be valuable to have all the members of the planning board, just like we have all the members of the select board and and open it up to all the members of the EDC. Uh, because I think there are, you know. I I think there's some good points and a lot of people uh. Could help uh come up with a, a good plan for this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just, Rachel, is there any harm in closing it and reopening it later on? Is is that an option so that we we take it off the table?
Yeah, that's an option for you.
I I think that might be, that would allow us to speak more freely, I think, and not get caught up in any any uh situations. Um. And let this flow through the process and and then to Mr. Goddard's point, we may wanna talk about when a special. Town meeting is held. So if we go to November and there's a problem, do we have enough time to get into December because? Those are holiday seasons. Just wanna make sure we think about those logistics in terms of making sure we have our options.
Yeah, and and I I uh. You know, we've gotten a lot of letters from residents pro and against what we're doing. And it it, the contents of the letters have really never, you know, it's sort of like. We gotta do it because the state says so. It it's, that's not the reason why we're, you know, you don't do things because. Somebody tells you you have to do it in a democracy, you know, it's, I I read, I read a passage from uh Ronald Reagan's farewell address. From uh, when he was leaving office and it's we the people. You know, the the people, the the government is the vehicle, the people are the drivers. They tell the vehicle where to go, how fast to go. So it's it's something that in a, we we need to. Really have the conversation, get educated and look at all the options, you know, not go down a path and saying we're gonna stand hard on eight. Per acre. We have to look at that fifteen, but we need to look at all the properties and and have a discussion on each one of those properties. Uh, I know when we had the presentation, there were some that were Xed out. And and we'd like to know why, you know, why were they Xed out? Why were they not selected? So, you know, the next meeting. May be great to look at all the properties and uh, you know, look at all the options. Because, you know, the the other thing we have to look at is placement is water. You know, the west end of town has a a water issue. We can't find a place to put a well. That we don't have hydrants down on the west end of town, you know, a a a de- a high density development such as this one. Is gonna require massive amounts, massive amounts of water for fire protection and for for domestic use. And uh. And so we we just really need to look at all uh. All avenues and everything, because I think me personally, seeing this, you know, four weeks ago. And three weeks ago, actually, and. You know, first thing was, yeah, maybe we're a little bit, hey, no way, but we thought about it and I think it's. You know, we understand it and we wanna do what's right. Uh, Michelle, did you have a question?
Um, will we be then in our next meeting asking for more of the requirements? That had been, that were looked at for some of the parcels that have been recommended um, from the town planner? Um, will that be on our next meeting where we'll get more clarification?
Rachel, could that be provided?
As to why the districts weren't chosen or the parcels weren't chosen?
Yeah, I feel that as though, you know, you've presented the two parcels and I have looked through. The MBTA requirements and I'm not seeing it mapped out. I'd love to be pointed in that direction in terms of. You know, you've alluded to it needs to be next to downtown. You've mentioned sidewalks. You've mentioned different things. So I'd love to see those requirements because. I feel like that we wanna look at all parcels and and make sure that we're looking at all options and not just focusing on these two. To make sure that we're, you know, making again the best decision for our town.
Yeah, sure. Um, and those, as an adjacent community, um, that was all laid out in that presentation on. I believe it was the February seventh meeting to the planning board, but that's fine. I can include that in another presentation. Um, as well.
This went a lot quicker than I thought. Any other questions from uh the select board?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chair, but I would like to propose that we give an opportunity. So that there needs to be a mechanism that if anyone on this call or any of the residents. Has an idea about a potential parcel that we are not thinking about, is not on our list for any reason. That needs, we need to know that information. I had a conversation today with someone. I had no idea they own that parcel. Um. So I think we need some kind of a mechanism where someone can, you know, is it an email to the to the BOS, to the uh? Select board email. What's that mechanism look like? Because I know we have residents that have great ideas. And I wanna make sure that everyone has a voice so we can vet this properly.
Yeah, a- and that's a very good point, because, you know, if if. If this is a community, uh. The community comes together to create this zoning. Then at the end of the day, it's gonna pass what needs to be done for the community. So I I agree, we need to get uh as many uh people in in, we have a new wa- a new email address, Amanda, it's.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I I would recommend that, um, so nothing gets missed, that anybody's interested, they send it to both email addresses, which is planning. At Rantham dot gov, which will go to the land use staff. On the planning department as well as the SB office, as in select board SB office. At Rantham dot gov. Both of those emails will get to uh all of the staff that can then share. Uh, accordingly to um the boards uh appropriately and that way, uh, both, you know, both the administration as well as uh the Office of Planning. Um, is receiving the same emails and um, so that would be the recommendation. We also have a dedicated uh project site. On the town website, um, where we've been updating and providing prior presentations and things like that, um, as well as uh. Discussions, meeting discussions around this, as well as the the repository, we will keep these letters that were referenced and approved tonight. Um, so we could, you know, through the website and through those channels, I would recommend those two emails be used. They'll go to all the appropriate staff members that can then. Uh, disseminate.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the planning board?
Let's Mr. Lawrence uh or Mr. Woodhams has anything else to say about uh. We will bring this on Wednesday for a vote. I'll make the motion. Of course, it's a seven-member board and every member can vote independently, but we'll uh. We'll hopefully get uh, get that vote we need to push it to uh, to the November um. Town meeting and we'll back up from there, the number of meetings we need for open, open public hearings. But uh, Mr. Woodhams or Mr. Lawrence, any thoughts?
Mr. Chair, um, if I, uh, are we gonna sk- schedule an additional joint meeting? Um, in a month or? How how are we gonna go about that?
W- we will, and you know, I'll leave it, uh, you know, if we could get what we what we are requesting. From uh, planning. You know, I know Michelle had some requests and just to get all the information together and when it's ready. You know, we're probably looking at towards the end of March for another meeting. Uh, to sit down and have a conversation, but to have, have all the, and 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 this. You know, a working session is basically sitting at the round table, rolling up your sleeves and and doing a little bit different here. But I think this was a great opportunity for all boards and committees to hear both all sides, cuz I think. You know, uh, I think planning may have got a little different outlook, seeing the approach we're taking. So it was good for all of us to get together and and. And be on the same page and understand what's going on. Uh, Jim, you're agreeing with us, uh, you know, it it's it's an option, you know, and if it works. Great. And uh, you know, it would, it'd be a great thing and it's, you know, if you've watched the meetings. I I think we're all passionate. Chuck, you 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 alluded to it. You know, I asked the question, the board members, why did you move to Rantham? And uh, you know, if you if you think about it. It was not because there was gonna be uh, you know, accessibility to the MBTA. It wasn't because it was gonna be uh apartments, seven hundred fifty apartments, fifty, a high density. It was for the open space. It was for the quality of life, that that the hiking trails, you know, we've got some great amenities in Rantham. And uh, you know, it's it's sort of like, i- if you watch these real estate programs, I use this analogy, you wa- you watch the real estate programs on HGTV. You know, what are you looking for? And people, they say they want to be close to the MBTA. They would not pick Rantham. Uh, so it's it's sort of. You you know, we understand it. We're not gonna say, we're we're not saying no, it's it's just, we we need to uh. We just need to have a conversation with the governor.
Mr. Mr. Chair, could I, could I ask one more question? In addition to the follow-up, the due diligence that we're all referencing. Me personally, it'd be very helpful for us to get an update as to where the other towns are. Uh, in their challenges, right? So like Milton, I'd love to know where Milton is. Uh, and I know presently, but I'm talking about as we continue to march down this path. Where's Holden? Where's Milton? Where's Bellingham? Where are the other communities that have said, hey, wait a minute? I wanna pump the brakes and and we don't think this is constitutional. We don't think this is enforceable, yada, yada, yada. I think that's gonna help to Mr. Woodhams' point. If we know that people are making traction. That could affect our decision-making. Um, and I think that's very important to the twelve thousand residents in Rantham to see how other towns are doing with said traction.
Exactly, and and I think, I I wanna thank uh Select Board Member Row. She's been following Milton very closely. Uh, Gloucester, uh, they reached out to me. They're having a meeting tomorrow in Gloucester. Uh, and I could share that information with the board members if they want to uh. Dial into that meeting. Uh, so it it's good to see what's going on, to see the conversations, uh.
So Joe, can we, can we, can we ask that? Could we have Kevin at the, at the, at the next meeting, whether it's this group, both groups, all three? Boards together? Can we continue to get an update as to where that, you know, where those other communities are?
I I think it would be a good thing that at a select board meeting and at the planning board meetings that we get updates.
Okay, great.
What, and you know, it's just uh. You know, i- if, I don't wanna put this burden on on Michelle, but if we could do it through town hall, just to get updates. You know, cuz we just heard that Milton uh, AG's office has put a lawsuit against Milton. But Rockport has put a lawsuit against the state, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, it's going back and forth and just to understand and follow what's going on. Uh, you know, the 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 last thing I I I wanna do is get into a lawsuit, but in the same token, I just wanna be treated fairly. And I think we all wanna be treated fairly and just be able to have a conversation. Beth. Beth, you're waving to me.
Sorry about that. I was trying to unmute. Um, one, one of the commission's functions um is to make recommendations and advise the town officials and staff. So I just thought it would be important for us to mention that you can, the members of the public could email us at EDC at Rantham dot gov. Um, and I also just wanted to mention. That I do agree with potentially sort of penciling in um a a a town meeting. That could be potentially after November to give us every opportunity to make the best decision possible. Um, so I think that that's really important. And lastly, I was curious, um, what, what engineering costs and and consulting costs went into. Coming up with. Um, the two, I think there was only two potential um locations and how much does that just? Just curious how much that costs to to just get that information alone. I don't know who can answer that.
I think maybe Rachel can answer that. To your ask, would?
Maybe that's part of the due diligence, maybe, you know, I'm not sure.
Hi, Rachel Benson, Director of Planning again. Um, we got technical assistance through Mass Housing Partnership and we're working with uh Bowler Engineering right now to go through. Uh, the compliance model um, for the town. I do not have a price for that, cuz it is just technical assistance, so. Mass Housing Partnership pays Bowler. We don't get the money. We just get all their work, all their plans and the spreadsheets.
I- is there a way to get a figure on that?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I know that in the uh, one of the articles with Milton and and in speaking with board members in Milton. Uh, the AG is saying that that part of their assistance that they gave to Milton was through um. Helping, I think, a reference of thirty or forty K in helping with some of those engineering and planning, so um. There's gotta be numbers somewhere that we can look at, because the AG referenced those in an article in the Boston Herald today, as well as speaking to. Milton Planning Board Members today. I got that information. I think that would be helpful for us to know too.
Yeah.
Sure, if you, I can get you the exact number, um, as soon as I talk to Bowler tomorrow. Um, or the day after, so if the next time I meet with you guys, I will have that number for you.
All right.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else?
Thank you.
Being nothing else, uh, actually. Just cruise the screens, make sure there's no hands up, no hands up. Beth, at this time, I I need you to close your your meeting. So you're gonna detain a motion to close the EDC meeting. Oh, actually, before you do that, Mr. Gordon.
Hi, um. Harvey Gordon, one twenty-nine Lakeside Ave, Rantham. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um. Once we select a site or multiple sites, can we later expand the zone or uh add in others? Parcel to the zone if we want to?
Zoning is not my forte, so we don't need that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think that's Rachel or maybe uh our consultant can answer that if they, yes, Rachel can't tonight.
So it would be similar to any other zoning amendment. If you want to. You know, add more, change the zoning, you'd have to, you know, follow the rules of. Chapter forty-eight, section five, you know, public hearing and vote on it at town meeting. So you can do that.
Okay, so. In effect. We can, we have. In effect, we can, we have, I guess we have to have fifty acres zoned for this, is that correct?
Take is correct.
That is correct.
Okay, if we have fifty acres zoned for this particular zone. And then we add another forty acres, can we then subtract a site of? Twenty-five or thirty acres if we want to, so long as we keep the minimum fifty acres?
So there's a bunch, there's some other things, it's not just as simple as fifty acres. Um, each of them has to have the capacity, so on average, they have to be. Um, fifteen units per acre, number, you know, number two, fifty acres, and then fifteen units per acre. Um, and then each site has different um, environmental or different constraints on it, so. You know, just because you have twenty-five acres doesn't mean that all twenty-five acres is gonna be fully developable. Um, and so we'd have to run them through that compliance model, um, that the state has provided us, um, but. Uh, everything, everything is figure-outable, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so the state has given us a compliance uh, model, so. Whatever sites the town picks, the state has to approve them in effect. Is that correct?
If they fit with the compliance model, yes.
Okay, and once we have the zone set up, does anything have to be built on any of these zones?
No.
So once you, you pick fifty acres that are compliant. The owners of the land have the right to apply to build. On those parcels or not to build?
Correct.
And there, there's no downside if. The town picks a parcel of land, the, the owner still gets all the benefits or all the constraints. That the underlying zone has, correct?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay, um. That, thank you so much for your answers, appreciate that.
Beth, you wanna close your meeting?
Sure. Oh, we, do we have anybody else? Yep, I, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the, the EDC meeting at seven fifty-six. Does anyone wanna move the motion? Rebecca, Joanna?
So moved.
Great, do I have a second? Becca?
My second, yep, my second.
Great, any further discussion?
Your roll call vote, because we're on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Roll call vote, Jeff Rubison?
Aye.
Joanna McFarlane?
Aye.
Becca Zidmore?
Aye.
Any post? Any abstentions? Motion carries, three zero. Thank you.
And is the board have anything else before we adjourn?
We do not.
That being said, I would like to thank Michael, Jim, and Chuck for joining us, and Rachel. I think this is a, a first step in having a conversation. I think it really, uh, everyone has an understanding how everybody feels. I think it was probably a very productive hour. Uh, I'd like to thank all the residents who, who uh, who have joined in the meeting and to listen. Uh, it's great to see the participation from the residents and to understand that it's. This is something that we're doing, I do diligence to get the best for the town of Rentham, the place you call home. So at this time, the chant and a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Oh, everybody seconded. I think I heard the loudest one was Mr. Harrington. Motion made by Select, Select Board Member Anderson, seconded by Select Board Member Harrington. We'll do a roll call vote. Select Board Member Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Botash, yes. Select Board Member Gallo?
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Rose?
Rose, yes.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.